I'd like to call out whoever had me not. Any strong kind of conditions to allow? Would the high foot please offer a prayer?
Eternal God, our Father, we give thanks for this day. We're so thankful and blessed to have those things that we need and those things that we even desire. So we ask that you would bless us as we fellowship here together tonight at this meeting to make our county a better place and wish to bless our minds and our hearts, that we can be on one accord, that your will might be done, in Jesus' name, amen.
You received the message of the previous meeting in your agenda package? No additions or corrections, whether there was?
So moved.
Questions? All in favor, let me know by voting in a line. All opposed? Hearing none, the minutes are all approved. Scheduled appointments, a second?
Mr. Chairman, I don't know if Ms. McClity is here yet.
If not, we'll take her sometime, Missy Callen. Okay, moving ahead, next.
Item B for scheduled appointment, I'd like to call Mr. Art Bradley to the podium. We want to take this opportunity to acknowledge his recent award that he received, Mr. Art Bradley, that we are proud to be able to say he is Edgecombe County Extension Director. Recently received the Carol Burkin Outstanding County Extension Director Award for 2018.
You've got an interest in summer in the, in our agenda package, and I think we need to read that into the record. Read that into the record, Mr. Chairman.
Art Bradley receives the Outstanding County Extension Director Award. North Carolina Cooperative Extension recently recognized Art Bradley with the Carol Burkin Outstanding County Extension Director Award for 2018. Art serves as the County Extension Director for the North Carolina Cooperative Extension, Edgecombe County Center, providing leadership in that position since 2009. Cooperative Extension is a partnership of the county and our land-grant universities, North Carolina State University and NCANT State University, providing educational outreach in agriculture, youth development, family and consumer issues, and community development. I had given a quote as saying that Mr. Bradley certainly does his job very well, but more impressively, he routinely goes above and beyond the duties required of him. He has used his position as a platform to establish himself as a great leader in our organization and the county as a whole. Art began his career in Edgecombe County as an agricultural extension agent, serving our farmers with research-driven educational programming for field crops. He is supported by a staff that is devoted to helping people and county government that recognizes the importance of agriculture.
And I would say on the average report, I think that I could represent what it's for at the other option. And you would just say we'd like to thank you for your service and your continued service. Any comments from the board?
Thank y'all so much and appreciate your continued support. I can't think of any higher honor and such a privilege to me to be able to be from Edgecombe County and come back here and work for the county and NC State University, and the two organizations that I love dearly. And this has been a tremendous honor. But very little of that work I can take credit for. It's all the staff members and all the, you know, do all the work day in and day out. I just do a very small part of that, and we really work together as a team to get it done. I did want to recognize one person, Ms. Yvonne Murphy. If you would stand up, Yvonne. She's one part of our team, and just to let you know what the partnership between Edgecombe County and NC State University provides, the last two years she's been on a CDC grant that has helped address obesity and nutrition issues here in the county that has certainly helped in lots of different areas. Many of you have been to events that she has helped through that program to improve parks and recreation office abilities here in the county. And just to let you know, we've got another grant that she's going to be part of is the Department of Public Health Grant that will focus on physical activity, and we've got some areas that we'd like to address in other parts of the county. So that can be up to a three-year grant. So we look forward to her being able to continue to work in the county and help improve parks and rec opportunities in the county and disability. So we appreciate that opportunity.
Mr. Chairman. I like your unglness when you get lessons, you know? But always remember that we know you've got your hand here.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. It's a time now, ladies and gentlemen, for public attention from the public. If there's anybody who would like to come to speak to us now, please come forward and state your name and address for the public right.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Darla Jordan. I live at 614 East Wilson Street in Tarver, North Carolina. I come before you because I've been, I've received several phone calls from parents of children with disabilities who want to participate in Special Olympics, Edgecombe County Special Olympics event. A bus were just no longer exist. And I would like you all to consider the support of that. I'm willing to help these parents get this along. I currently work as a qualified professional individual that are IDB, Intellectual and Intellectual. And that's my passion. I'm also the mother of autistic son who get benefit of participating in Special Olympics. I know they have their senior games and stuff, but there are families who would really come out and participate in the games and give their kids something to feel proud of themselves about representing Edgecombe County and their town and community where they live. So that's why I'm standing here. I don't know if you would want to take up the torch and kind of give me a call and see if we meet and do something about it. But I want Edgecombe County to provide the same support that I've seen across the North Carolina, the state of North Carolina. And it's just a shame that it kind of just has gone away. I keep getting approached by the former chair, but I would like the parents to be the family force and keep it going or whatever. But my son's grown now, and he's there this time. But we have quite a few individuals in the community that deal with special needs that would probably participate, adults and children, but just like to take considerations.
Well, I'm going to give that charge to the manager. I say on the average report, I think there's something that you need to participate in.
Yes, sir.
And the manager will be your contact if he has a designated. But I'm saying to the manager, if they're not a designated board, this kind of needs to participate. Make it happen, okay?
Thank you.
And I'll be the lamp to him.
Hearing none?
Thank you.
Check with the manager, and our name should be on that support issue.
That's right.
Sometimes all you got is this command. Okay, and some things we don't know that we're not doing.
That's right.
Once we know, we have a willingness to participate.
That's right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
It always happens here, most of the time. Is there anybody else to speak?
I'm Bronson Williams, 611 Harbor Street, Rocky Mountain, North Carolina. Let's talk about priorities as we're getting to the budget season of 2019 fiscal year. I had an opportunity to read some of the Telegram articles and other newspapers in regards to our Sheriff's Department, and how do we prioritize the hard-working men and women of that agency who protects our county every single day? At some point, priorities move off the list and you begin to really focus on that area. I personally believe that safe communities are growing communities, and we see the great work this commission has done with attracting C-SEX who's coming here, according, and what have you. And so we certainly want to be sure that we are not investing money in men and women who go and leave because they're getting high pay. But we are serious about the commitment and investment that we make to the members of our Edgecombe County Sheriff's Department, and we see how we can give them something. And I understand that we want to do across-the-board raises, but sometimes it's easier to do things in phases and then get the new matches. It's almost like developing a community. You develop where you can, and then you move. So I hope that, and I know that the sheriff said, what you can do, you will do. So I hope that we are making that agency a priority in this budget coming forward. Thank you so much for all that you did.
Is there anybody else to speak?
I'm Rappin' Roseback Higgins, Spade, North Carolina. I'm just concerned about one department as I am the other. I know y'all heard that Edgecombe County is losing law enforcement officers. But I can tell you for the 30 years that I've been paying attention to Edgecombe County government, Edgecombe County has served as training ground for health departments, social services. Some of these people are moving away so they can get more money. Some of them want to go to brighter life. But I think there's a misconception out there where everybody sees this dirt being turned for the triangle tire, also cornering, and they also know that the red room may be potential coming. I think they'd be instantly seeing dollars and cents. But I would think about and realize the incentive that Edgecombe County had to give to recruit those industry here. And I would encourage you all to do everything y'all can to hold that spending line down, because it would be a shame to pass that indebtedness down to another generation. Y'all get a chance to spend a whole lot of money. I know everybody loves to spend money. But I encourage y'all to look at all of the employees, and what y'all hearing is nothing new. You don't see the other departments coming up here because they know how the game is played. And I think everybody should play by the same rules. When Sheriff accepted this position, he should have been smart enough to realize that he had to operate through a budget. And if he don't know it, as soon as y'all learn him, the belly you all would be and the belly that he would be. Thank you so much.
Good evening. How y'all doing? Edgecombe County Manager. Those of you who don't know me, I'm Thomas Walker. Life long been with Edgecombe County, a community, former county commissioner for the young.
I know you're the reason I'm here.
Okay, let me just say, sometime we kind of start a conversation, other time we're going into conversation, another time we kind of walk into. I think the latter is my case today. I was over here for another meeting and represented the matter till we come up. But I've also been reading about the concerns about sheriff and our law enforcement. Law enforcement, Sheriff Department, been something that I've been keen to wear, seek where the progress that we made in higher. I'm very impressed with our current sheriff, and I'm impressed with his program that he has. I really appreciate the priority that this Board of Commissioners has given to law enforcement. But unless you live in another world that I'm not living in, you must see that that is one of the real crises, one of the real issues that we're dealing with in our world, and that is safety. And taking our law enforcement and do everything we can do. Yes, keep the law and the order, make sure that the law and order is distributed properly. Because I lived through an age where for our citizens, it was all the law for one part of our section and all the order for others. I hope we are beyond that. But we have a good sheriff, good department, and I realize that money. Oh, always it was an issue when I was up here, it's an issue now. But as we carry out our budgets in our own private places of domestic, priorities must take precedence over everything else. So please, let's not assume that our community is going to be able to maintain the kind of peace and tranquility that it definitely need. We're talking about the industry coming. But industry is going to be here, they're going to need to have that security that they are protected and looked at. So in some reasonable way, I hope that we will keep our law enforcement priority.
My name is Carlos Daxton. 127 Midway, Main Tarver, Hill Box 1391, Pine Top, North Carolina. I would like to echo what Bronson Williams said, and also really Thomas H. Walker. But I want to take it to another level. Now, I don't know about other folk, but I follow the news not only locally but across the state. And I see our Sheriff Department being called to different places, not only Nash County but other places also. So let me know that we have some kind of expertise here. And we also have some expertise because we have something that some others don't have. We also have the previous sheriff that they piggyback on. I understand, you know, we have folk come and just say stuff, but I hope y'all put that stuff to the side and look at the real world like Dr. Walker said. Safety is number one. I've been working in Rocky Mountain for 32 years on Nash County side, right at the Edgecombe County line where the CSX is going. I worked at Hunterville in Rocky Mountain, been working there 32 years, January 26th. So I get the best of both counties. Also, a lifetime, longtime Democrat, served Edgecombe and Nash County. I'm currently on the Rocky Mountain Humiliation Commission. For some reason, they chose my friend over the other, but me here, I couldn't get over here. So just like I get recognized other places for the work I do, I have to go with the flow. But I know the county, and I'm 56 years old, and I've been out here ever came since the late 80s, so I know both counties. I know what's going on, I know all the players. And as they stated, we need to look at the law enforcement. I'm going to tell you, if it was me, and y'all know I wrote the history about it, with the type of money that Rocky Mountain pay, Lord Jesus, that's all we're saying.
Is there anybody else to speak? Hearing none? I hope you don't think all of these comments and all of your comments will be taken on to the jury. Next on the agenda, consideration or approval of legislative amendments. Is there any people who want to add things?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman, happy to answer any questions.
Is there more to it?
So moved.
Say, questions? All in favor, let me know by voting in a line.
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, it is approved. Consideration approved, go ahead, next, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, currently, our administrative personnel policies include provisions that govern the use of personal vehicles for county business and the reimbursement of costs for doing so. We have determined the policy needs revising to address situations that are unclear as it currently reads. In your agenda package, you have a document that shows what our current policy states and the recommended changes. I recommend the board approves this revision to our administrative and personnel policy.
Based on your review of the changes in the agenda package, is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Questions? All in favor, let me know by voting in a line.
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, it is approved. Next.
Next is regarding the mileage reimbursement rate. We follow the rate that is established by the Internal Revenue Service. They typically will revise that rate annually. They recently sent out a notification that they are recommending the rate to go from 54 and a half cents to 58 cents. Therefore, I recommend that the board approves a new mileage reimbursement rate of 58 cents.
Is there much to approve?
Second.
Questions? All in favor, let me know by voting in a line.
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, it is approved. Next is D.
Item D is, we have received a request, excuse me, from Nash County, from Nash Community College to consider a memorandum of understanding with their veterinarian medical technology program. As you will see in the MOU, they are proposing that we transfer animals from our shelter to their program to be used for training their students. In return, these animals will be provided basic and routine animal healthcare at no cost to the county. This is supported by Sheriff Atkinson and the staff at Edgecombe County Animal Shelter. Therefore, I recommend that the board approves the MOU as presented. Dr. Mandy Tolson, who is the instructor for the program, is present here tonight, and she's happy to answer any question that you might have.
Again, if you'd like to make comments on it before we take action.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Mandy Tolson, Mrs. Yvonne Toney. And it just, I appreciate y'all considering this. The program is not a program that's at Edgecombe Community College. Closest one is Nash, and having one in the northeastern part of the state is really important for our community because it focuses not only companion animals but also agriculture. And so if you have any questions about the MOU and what we're planning on doing.
It's something that you would recommend leaving?
Yes, sir, yes, sir. I'm the attending veterinarian for the program. We currently have 17 students enrolled in the program. It will benefit, you know, these are all animals that will be more adoptable, which is always the goal of the animal shelter. And I just appreciate them and Sheriff Atkinson's support in this. And it makes them more adoptable, it's better for theirs, more vaccines going into the animals, going out into the public, so it's better for public health and it's for Edgecombe County, which is what I'm also trying to do.
It's based on your MOU that disappeared, didn't it, that we will leave, that's for you.
That's clear.
Yes, sir. Legally, and Eugene can probably speak to this better than me, but legally, these animals are owned by the county, and transport of them has to be done by, for legal reasons. And we have talked with Eugene and his staff on transport to the college, and we'll work with them and have whatever they need to be able to get them there.
Is there motion?
So moved. Second.
Question? Go ahead.
Is Nash County Animal Shelter involved?
Yes, ma'am. So we actually have the same wording, same MOU with Nash County in place already. Being from Edgecombe County, I wanted to be here next.
Any other questions? All in favor, let me know by voting in a line.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none, it is approved. E.
Item E is regarding anti-poverty plan from Need Incorporated. The National Edgecombe Economic Development Incorporated, or Need Incorporated, receives federal funding through the Community Services Block Grant Program. The requirement of the program is to submit an anti-poverty plan. This plan discusses their strategies for eliminating poverty within their service area. Electronic copy was sent to you on January 11th. No action is needed of you. Need Incorporated is required to distribute a copy of the plan to you at least 30 days prior to its submission, which is due on February 15th. You also, you are also to be given an opportunity to submit your comments along with this plan. And certainly, if you have any comments tonight, we will forward that along to the staff at Need.
Any other comments for the board, based on your view of the plan? And I guess we just sent two acknowledgements, you see? Is there a motion on that?
No, sir, but there will be a form for us to sign, for Ms. Monge to sign, saying that you did receive any of your acknowledgements.
Good enough. Any other questions on that? Moving on to the other.
Item F is regarding surplusing personal property. As you know, we're continuing to move forward with the lease relocation program and the net lace mobile home part. We do have one more mobile home that has been now transitioning to our ownership, being that this is considered personal property with the title. Before we can dispose of the property, it has to be deemed as surplus. So my recommendation is that you declare the home located at 37 Lagoon Lane as surplus and authorize staff to sell the same pool gut deals.
Motion? Questions? All in favor, let me know by voting in a line.
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, it is approved. After lease, list and release for due approval, anything regarding the board's attention?
No, sir, happy to answer any questions you might have.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Questions? All in favor, let me know by voting in a line.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none, it is approved.
Mr. Wiggins, before we go into reports, you have supplemental agenda item or items before you that the board is agreeable to considering those tonight?
The supplemental agenda is consideration approved, a resolution authorized for the donation of lots to the United Methodist Church for hurricane recovery. You want to explain this to us, Brad?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
And you have a memo also explaining this later?
As you know, the North Carolina Conference of the United Methodist Church has been here in the county assisting with Hurricane Matthew recovery since immediately after the storm. Because of your willingness to allow them to operate out of our facility at North Main Street here in Tarver, they have been able to coordinate 200 volunteer teams with over 2,000 volunteers, providing nearly 80,000 work hours to complete 36 to rebuild projects. Along with the continuation of that work, the North Carolina Conference of the United Methodist Church is working on a special project to potentially build four new homes for flood survivors. As I had mentioned to you at your last meeting, they have a group of 100 volunteers coming to Edgecombe County to provide labor to construct these homes. They have already identified two families who still have a need for permanent housing to benefit from this mission. I've also identified two lots that the county owns through tax foreclosure. Their staff members have assessed these lots and determined them to be buildable and well-suited for the project. The lots are 329 Ridgewood Road and 1205 Newsome Street. They are considering two other lots owned by the town of Princeville. North Carolina general statute allows the county to convey property to an entity that carries out a public purpose. If you do so, a public notice is required after a resolution is passed, and sale cannot be consummated until 10 days after that notice. Considering the benefits this will provide to the recovery process and that these properties will revert to a taxable status, I recommend that you approve the attached resolution, which will authorize the sale, excuse me, of the above-mentioned properties for $1 east of the North Carolina Conference of the United Methodist Church.
Any questions? Is that a motion?
There is, huh? Make that motion.
You got a question? Second. Any other questions? All in favor, let me know by voting in a line.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none, it is approved.
If I could mention, and thank you for that, I think it's going to be a great project. I want to mention that the 100 people that are coming to do this home building blitz, they're going to build these homes in one week. So the United Methodist Church, they're going to coordinate the building of the foundation of the homes. This group is going to come in and take it from foundation up.
And we asked about a witness from the United Methodist Church?
Yes, sir, we do. Mr. Jason Duval is here. He is the director for the Mission Center, the Tarver Mission Center, out at our old health department is here. They've been working feverishly to try to prepare for this.
Well, we want to recognize you because we just appreciate the work that the United Methodist Church has done in this community and what you continue to do. And in a way, in a sense, we continue to support you, please have a note.
Thank you, sir.
Just for, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And I guess at this time, I'd just like to recognize, we know that you've seen our sheriff, you recognize Representative Willingham. He's our representative from this area. I try to recognize any other neck of the fist announcement in here? And just thank you for my job. Department reports for review.
You have one other item on your supplemental.
Yes, I was talking on, and there it is.
You have a recommendation for appointment to the Human Relations Commission.
And you have it recommended?
Ms. Tina Parker?
Is there more?
So moved. Second.
All in favor, let me know by voting in a line.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none, she is appointed.
Also, back under your scheduled appointment, and I don't believe that our presenter has got to be.
You want to go ahead and do that because we got to take some action?
Yes, sir, there is some action. So if we could refer back to your attachment, one in your agenda package. So the start of the 2020 census is quickly approaching us, and the U.S. Census Bureau is already very actively preparing for it. Part of that preparation includes deploying their staff to help communities with raising awareness and encouraging their participation. Ms. Cynthia Jones, our planning director, is our designated census liaison. She and I met with Mr. Terry Henderson, partnership specialist for the Atlanta Regional Census Center. He is encouraged as to establish what's called a Complete Count Committee. This Complete Count Committee is key in creating awareness in communities and encouraging participation in the census. The committee is to be comprised of a broad spectrum of government and community leaders. I believe such a committee would be beneficial for us, and I recommend I believe such a committee would be beneficial for us, and I recommend that you take action tonight to establish one. I suggest the committee consists of at least ten, but no more than twenty, community representatives. I also recommend that the following agencies and community sectors be represented, and they include elected official, ineligible official, faith community, aging population representative, social services, community college, a municipality representative, nonprofits, farming community, chamber of commerce, school system, Hispanic community, and then at-large members. Of course, as you know, we were expecting to have Ms. McCleady to be here tonight to give an overview of the upcoming census. You do have information in your packet regarding a Complete Count Committee and some other information on the timeline for key dates that are coming upon us in preparing for the 2020 census. Also want to point out, and this is something we have posted on the county's website, they are currently hiring for people to work the census. There's a flyer in your agenda packet on the, the number for interested parties to call if they're interested in, in applying for one of these jobs. But I do recommend, Mr. Chairman, that you consider tonight creating such a committee.
Is there motion? Second question. All in favor, let me know, I'm gonna go sign aye.
Aye.
All opposed, here and none, the committee is set, sign your proposal call out. You go, we're gonna be looking for members, we and you.
Yes, sir. So, so what we'll do is we'll plan to have this back on your agenda for your March meeting. Certainly, if you have folks that you'd be interested in being considered for this, let us know, we'd be happy to make contact, we may make some recommendations as well.
Departmental reports for review, and they're in your package. It said, in these, in these departmental, does that bring our attention here?
Just briefly, I'll mention, as related to Hurricane recovery update, we do, as you, you remember, we have been asked to implement the, the grant from North Carolina Department of Commerce for the development of fifty-three acre project for the town of Princeville. Currently, we have a request for proposals that's, that's out, and it's due back on February twenty-fifth, I believe it is. So shortly after that, we're gonna review those proposals. This would be to contract with an engineering firm to do a site assessment, basically a environmental and geotechnical survey of the site, and from there determine, you know, if the entire site is buildable, if not, how much of it is, so that we can move that project forward. So I just wanted you and the public to know that that, that project is still, we're still working on that project. I also want to mention that you, I think you remember, at your last meeting, we had four remaining tenants at Middle Lakes Mobile Home Park that had not signed one of the three options that you've made available to them. Since then, we've had one of those four to sign their contracts, and we're glad to at least make that, that progress. I want to thank Mr. Mike Matthews and Mr. O'Leary Pittman for working on that. I do want, I guess, to prepare us all that if we do still have residents out there leading up to the deadline, which is April the thirteenth, you certainly would suspect that we'll have to move to the next step of, of closing that part.
Well, then, I guess, what was said, you need to be prepared to move to the next step?
Yes, sir. But that's all for department reports, so if you have to answer any questions, if you have.
Any questions on that?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Concerning the water and sewer, we tend to continue to have a problem with a leak. Can, do you have any insight on what we're doing there to find it?
Sure.
It's, it's a large amount, that's costing the county every month.
Yeah, so if I could get Mike Matthews, if you won't mind coming up and describing for the board the issue that you've identified, you want me to tell y'all the detail? A summary of?
I want you to take about three minutes.
Have we isolated it? Do we know where it is?
Yes, sir, we know exactly. It's not a water leak, it's a sewer leak. It is a water leak, but it's, it's groundwater leaks into our sewer system. The way we found it was, we take daily vault readings, and we also take a daily reading off of the meter that is at the City of Rocky Mountain Treatment Plant. I noticed a few weeks ago that that number was steadily increasing as an average daily total. And so we began to book, and sure enough, right there in front of one of our lift stations, that New Hope Church Road, we found, basically, it's a, where the pipe goes into the manhole at the bottom twenty foot down, the boot that goes on to seal the outside water has come loose, and basically, every bit of groundwater that is along New Hope Church Road is traveling down the length of that pipe into that manhole. And so we're trying our best to get it to stop. We're trying every avenue that we can come up with. I've been down there, last week, I was down in the hole about three hours trying to, a new technique that I had learned about. Unfortunately, fortunately, it did work a little bit, we cut it down by about ten thousand a day, but it did not totally stop it. So our next step is to, we're gonna well point, which will actually suck the water out of the ground and disperse it into ditches, and hopefully get water to stop long enough for us to get in there and seal it up completely, and it'll be done.
You said it's going to the sewer system?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, has it damaged the, on water?
No, everything in the water is, is fine. It's just that we're sending groundwater to Rocky Mountain to be treated.
So we're paying them to treat our groundwater? I've estimated forty-three million gallons in the last four months.
Well, it started middle of November.
Right. Well, I went back and worked August to December.
Right.
Where we went from zero percent loss, one percent loss, to all of a sudden thirty-nine percent, thirty-two percent, thirty-three percent loss. So we've been, there's groundwater's going into our sewer system, and then we're paying Rocky Mountain to treat our groundwater.
Correct.
Question. So that has no reference with our citizens who are on that line out there?
Yeah, ma'am. We've, we've checked everything from that point all the way back that everybody's on the sewer system on that section of line. There is no issue there.
So we're paying, we're paying their sewage by meter? I thought, I thought we paid sewage based on use, on water usage?
Rocky Mountain, when the sewer system was first put in back in two ninety-nine, two thousand, they required it to have a meter on, at the treatment plant.
For sewage?
Yes, sir.
We bill our citizens based on their water usage, and we, but the county is billed by the City of Rocky Mountain when it enters their treatment plant.
Correct.
Is this?
And the town of Tarboro is?
Because we might not be buying this water, so do we? The water that we buy from Rocky, that we buy from Rocky Mountain, we don't pay sewage, we pay based on the water usage, right?
Yeah, correct.
Any other questions?
Good luck.
I'm coming up with new techniques, I'll teach a class on it.
We need to get it under wraps.
We're gonna get it done.
Alright.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any other questions to come in? Here and none, on the management reports, we've received all of those in our packages. Let it explain anything in there.
I do want to mention item D on the Golden Leaf Grant for the fire station. You'll recall that as part of the state's recovery, flood recovery effort, they allocated some funds to Golden Leaf to do some infrastructure projects. We have received a grant agreement, five hundred and forty thousand dollars, to assist with the building of a new fire station for the principal volunteer fire department. This was sort of running alongside the two point six million we received from Commerce to develop that site. Golden Leaf has determined that basically having two separate grant projects side by side is just not time or cost effective. So what they're going to do, they're going to basically terminate their grant agreement with us for the five hundred and forty thousand dollars. North Carolina Department of Commerce is gonna take on that with their overall two point six million dollar. So they're gonna send us a revised grant agreement to increase that funding amount from two point six to add to five hundred and forty thousand dollars. So the letter you'll see in there is Golden Leaf contacting us on their side of the project to let us know. I have talked with folks in North Carolina Department of Commerce. They, they had all worked that out among themselves before I was even alerted, but they were agreement with it, and we're just waiting now for this revised grant.
That's my question. That's always saying, don't take back money. With that, can you give me an update? Has any of our citizens, citizens actually gotten money for the buyout?
Well, we have six or seven closings that we're working on scheduling. I guess probably next week or so. How many is that?
Eight.
Eight, okay.
Now, all those in the county?
Those are county, that's correct. So, you know, we just got the grant agreement for the town of Princeville about two months ago. So we are having appraisals done now. As soon as we get those appraisals back, we're also gonna be, Mr. Peters is gonna start working on the title searches for those. We couldn't start any of that until we got the grant agreement. And then as soon as we have the appraisal and title searches, we'll start working down the list and make office purchase for those as well.
So are we keep, how are we keeping citizens up to date, but no, we haven't forgotten to stop calling and say, y'all have the money while we don't have it?
Yeah, well, they call our recovery office often, but certainly, if you have anybody that calls you, either report that to me, or if I can get that to the recovery office. They talk to them on a fairly regular basis, the case managers do.
I just want to make sure somebody's keeping up.
Sure.
Making sure folks know you're still on the radar.
How's your friend, E, how's him?
Sure. Item E is from the Southeastern North Carolina Community Development Corporation. You may or may not know that that is basically a development arm of the Rocky Mountain Housing Authority. Rocky Mountain Housing Authority, you know, not only do they manage their rental units and Section A vouchers, but they also, through their development arm, work towards developing new housing, new affordable housing. Mr. Kelvin Macklin, who's the executive director of the Housing Authority, contacted me some time back that they are interested in building some new housing. They have some funds available, have access to additional funds, and wanted to know any properties that the county owned. And so I sent him the list of properties that we own through tax foreclosure, and he reviewed that list, and he has some interest in the properties located on Vance Street in Rocky Mountain, the city limits of Rocky Mountain. There's possibility they could pursue some housing funds through the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency that they could leverage with funds that they already have. And so they are interested in, in these particular parcels. So at this point, they're not requesting that the county transfer those properties to them. They need to do their due diligence to see if those lots are suitable, if they're buildable, and all those kinds of things. But I just wanted you to be aware that they do have some interest in those particular properties. And if they proceed with, you know, wanting to do something those, with those, we certainly bring those back, bring that back to you for your action.
Any questions? And now, any commissioners report?
Look at, two, two items. One, all of you have a little bullet point of dump site recommendations. I gave him again, and I asked him to look at it and discuss it.
And we really had asked you to do this, and the board had, yeah, the board had.
Talking about it two or three times.
Right.
We can move forward with it next meet, not only gave it to him today, so that's my fault. But anyway, I asked him to give us his input on what could or couldn't be done, or should or shouldn't be done. Second thing is, we continue to have in my district, which are amendments problem with deer hunters. And I am contacting another commissioner from Halifax County as recommended by one of the local law enforcement agencies to discuss maybe some possible remedies, possibly even changing the local law just a word, but we'll get more to that, just wanted to bring it up tonight, so you know what's coming in the pipe.
What's wrong with this?
What's the concern?
Well, the concern is some of the word, and if you look at the word between Nash County and Edgewood County, and it all pertains to hunters on the right of way. It's trying to give them the, enough power to enforce the law in both counties equally, the same way, easily in both counties.
So surely, it wouldn't change a lot of?
Right, it wouldn't change a lot of anything, it's just possibly something that could help us be able to prosecute some of these people that refuse to do what they should do, when they should do.
Should we put wildlife in it?
Yes, they're already, yes.
Back to your first bullet point, these dump site recommendations, is this from your research from some of the site managers?
These came from the horses, these came from the dump sites.
I was just wondering where these came from.
People that suffer these problems, day in and day out. Most of them that I've seen, witnessed myself, and can vouch for.
Okay.
And I don't know that they need addressing, or could be or should be addressed. That's why I get it pushed to everyone tonight, so he can tell us what we need to possibly do, if anything.
Sure.
Does it sound like a company?
That's all I have to say.
You go bring it back, yes?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to bring a report back from the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Legislative Goals. I handed those out to all of you the last meeting, and I got a response back from Mr. Wu. But I wanted to let you know what our top five goals are that are going to the North Carolina General Assembly. And this is to represent all one hundred counties. We had eighty-five of the one hundred counties represented at the legislative goals. So each county got a vote. And our top five would be broadband, statewide bond was a second one for education, preserve our existing local revenue. The fourth one was ask the state to give us resources to make sure that we're not putting people with behavioral problems or mental problems, or social service problems into jail. That we need something else. And the fifth one was to repeal the ability for school boards to sue boards of county commissioners when they don't feel like we have appropriated enough money for that budget. The other thing I wanted to report, hopefully?
They came out, that, that came out of the legislative goals?
Legislative goals.
In terms of the county support there?
Right. Those are the top five goals that we will be presenting to the general assembly.
So we're gonna make county commissioner school board, remember, go ahead.
Well, I had voted in favor of it.
Go ahead.
On February twenty-sixth, we will have our first district meeting. I'm your representative, I represent District Seven on the Board of Directors, which encompasses Edgewood, Nash, Wilson, and Northampton County. And they, we had a meeting, they asked where we might be able to have the first district meeting, and I asked them if we could have it in Rocky Mountain at the New Event Center. You know, to give all of those people who come from those counties an opportunity to see the event center and possibly utilize it. But that's February twenty-sixth, it's from five to eight P.M. And I hope I can count on some of this board to be there since we are hosting this district meeting.
Have they approved it? I bet they do.
Is it okay?
And that's something the association will take care of. They're supposed to get Fran to make sure she gets information out to our board. But what that assists of as district director, I have to make sure all those counties are up to date on everything that we talk about at our board meetings. You know, our board meetings move around the state, and the next one will be in my person. But I hope that some of you will be able to come, if you can't stay the whole time, they do serve a very nice demo.
We're coming for more than ten.
It's from five to eight. Five P.M. to eight P.M. And they will have some, we will have some people who exactly can tell us about why we can't get broadband, how we need to go about getting broadband out of county. That was one of the top ones that District Seven and District Eight voted on, so they're gonna bring some experts to our areas to talk about it. So I hope some of you will be able to.
The five goals was from all eighty-five counties, not just our district?
Right.
Anything? Any impressions about representative, I don't support taking away the right of school boards?
I didn't.
Okay. In terms of, if you take away the right of school boards to sue us, you have taken away their whole reason for being elected, because they can't develop their schools. That's from, I'm speaking for me, not that service board.
And I didn't ask y'all to vote on that, I did, wasn't it?
Well, you don't ever ask how to vote on nothing, so we, we alright, you made it that decision, alright?
I did give you the list of goals, you just.
Hey, that's why, that's why you're there, okay? That's why you're there.
Hey, I, I gave you my suggestion.
Is anything else to come on the commissions? Our Chinese reviews? Here and none. At this time, ladies and gentlemen, we're scheduled for a closed session to discuss economic development, press mail, and illegal, is there motion board?
So moved.
How's that?
Questions? All in favor, let me know, I'm gonna go sign aye. All opposed, ladies and gentlemen, we now be going into closed session, thank you for your time.